Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 27th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Christie, grab a roll call, please.
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Dunning.
Here.
Gagne. Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next we have approval of the minutes from the June 13th regular meeting and the June 13th closed session minutes.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have approval of the bills with Mr. Morissette.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move for the approval of the bills in the amount of $1,329,920.79, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next we have public comments. If anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say, now would be the time. Okay, Alderman, Bjork had something you'd like to?
Yeah, I'd like to just say something. Officer Jensen from the River Falls Fire, or Fire Police Department was, gave a presentation last week on National Night Out, which is August 1st, and it made me kind of think of something, and I just wanted to kind of share it with, with everybody. And, and any of you that are familiar with George Carlin, God bless his soul, but he was really a smart man for what he had to say and things, but let me just read just a little paragraph or a little statement that he said. "The paradox of our time in history is that we have taller buildings but shorter tempers, wider freeways but narrower viewpoints. We spend more but have less. We buy more but enjoy less. We have bigger houses and smaller families, more convenience but less time. We have more degrees but less sense, more knowledge but less judgment, more experts yet more problems. We have learned to make a living but not a life. We've added a year to life but not life to years. We've been all the way to the moon and back but have troubles crossing the street to meet a new neighbor. We conquered outer space but not inner space. We've done larger things but not better things. We've cleaned up the air but polluted our souls. We plan more but accomplish less. We've learned to rush but not to wait. We build our, we build more cell towers but share information, to share information faster, but we communicate less and less. Let's know our neighbors as they may become your best, our best friends. Remember to spend more time with your loved ones because they are not going to be around forever. Remember to say a kind word to someone who looks up to you in awe because that little person soon will be gone and leave your side. Remember to give a warm hug to the one next to you." Because that is-
I thought you were going for hell.
Oh, hell, yeah. Because that is a treasure you give with your heart. Remember to say "I love you" to your partner or your loved ones, but most of all, but most of all, mean it. A kiss and an embrace will mend hearts when it comes from deep inside you. And remember to hold hands and cherish the moment for some day that person will not be here. Give time to love, give time to speak, and give time to share the precious thoughts in your mind. So I'm just saying this because of that one statement when I was thinking back on time. It says, "We've been to the moon and back but have troubles crossing the street to meet our neighbor." Boy, if we can go to the moon, we can go across the street to meet our new neighbor. So take the time to go meet your neighbors or to plan a block party for that August 1st night, night, which is National Night Out. So, that's it.
Thanks. Okay, now, next, Police Chief Young has a presentation he'd like to make.
Yes, for Officer of the Year for 2016. Don't mind him, I'm down there. Officer Godferson, want to bring your family up too?
Okay.
City Administrator?
I'll give you-
Mr. Simpson?
Would you like us?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for coming. It means a lot to me and the department itself. This is our first annual Officer of the Year, my understanding, and very proud that you're the recipient of it. It was a tough decision. There's 21 other officers that were very well-deserved of this award, but you did stand out above and beyond the others. Just a little background on Officer Chris Godferson is that he's been serving since 1998, so 19 years on the force, and the last eight years as our School Resource Officer. And before we get going, do you want to introduce your, your kids?
Sure. This is Clara, and this is Chayton, and this is Dane, 5'7" to 9 years old, assumed to be 10.
Nice, well, thank you.
My wife is traveling. She's in Lincoln, Nebraska for work, so she had to leave this morning and they adjusted her flight so she couldn't be here, unfortunately.
Thank you for bringing them. In, in your position as School Resource Officer, just so people know, that it requires trust, compassion, patience, sacrifice, and knowledge. You embody all of these qualities in a unique blend of being amiable, having common sense, and of course, using the right amount of humor. Most SROs around the country are assigned to just one school, and whereas you're assigned to all the schools in the city of River Falls, so that does mean a lot. You work tirelessly as a police officer, but perhaps more importantly, as a teacher for the children. And some of the challenging duties that you do on a daily basis is investigate criminal cases that involve children, conduct home visits to find the root issues for school-related problems, also any criminal issues, working a reactive mode for the calls that are expected within any community for service that's needed. Also, while interacting with children on a daily basis in the hallways, lunchrooms, and playgrounds, you're organizing presentations on a wide variety of topics, and one of the most memorable was your recent, or I guess last year now, was the monster car crash that you put together. It came out very nice. And also, you supervise the Safety Patrol Program, which is, takes a lot of your time and, but it's very rewarding. So, congratulations, Officer Godferson, on the remarkable job that you've done in 2016. The community and the Police Department is very proud of you, so.
Thank you very much.
And, and before I forget too, I've got three awards for the children too.
Oh, great.
For being, for their dad being Officer of the Year. You also get a Hershey bar.
They're a little jacked tonight because they're going to their cousins right afterward, so they've been a little energetic. So I've been a little nervous prior to coming here tonight.
Can we get a, collect a photo?
Yeah, I'll say a little something really quick too. You guys want to stand and face Sergeant Sather?
Kids ready? Here we go. You guys want to go?
Okay. Thank you very much. Really briefly, first of all, I was humbled when I found out I was Officer of the Year. To be formally recognized in this, in this manner is, is really wonderful, so thank you very much, Chief Young and the rest of the Police Department. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks for everything.
Thank you. You're welcome. See you later.
Okay. Moving on. Next, we will close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2017-13. This is an ordinance to repeal and replace regulations related to fences in Title 17 zoning of the municipal code. Is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve ordinance 2017-13.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, again, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2017-14. This is an ordinance to repeal and replace regulations related to fences in Title 17 zoning of the municipal code. Is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve ordinance 2017-13.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, again, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2017-14. This is an ordinance to repeal and replace Section 17.72, would be for PUD planned unit development in Title 17 zoning of the municipal code. Does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to say about this? Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve ordinance number 2017-14.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Again, I will close the public hearing, or close the council and open up a public hearing on the annual liquor license and beer license renewals. Okay, the first one, the suggestion motions for the first one are grant renewals for the Class B beer license contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time, and this would be for Luigi's Pizza.
Mr. Mayor, I, is the representative from Luigi's here?
Yep, I'm sorry. There he is.
Then I-
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, we're in public hearing.
Hmm, thank you.
Yep. Does, is anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, now, do, I, I don't have to go into public hearing for each class, do I? We never did that before. We can just move on through the public hearing?
I'd just clarify, though, if anybody is here to speak on any of the licenses-
Right. Is, is there anybody in the audience to speak about any of the licenses? Otherwise, we'll close, close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing, and back to my original suggested motion of granting the Class B beer license contingent upon all licensing requirements are met at this time, and like I said, this will be for Luigi's Pizza.
Mr. Mayor, I so move.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Next one is, for motion two would be grant the combination Class B liquor and Class B beer license contingent on all licensing requirements being met at the time of this issuance, and this would be for Seala v. Bistro and Coffee Cottage.
I see Ms. Jensen in the audience, so I will move, move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And next one would be grant the combination Class A liquor and Class A beer license contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of the issuance, and this would be for Dick's Hometown Liquor.
Mr. Mayor, I see the agent is in the audience, so I will move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thanks. Next, move on to the consent agenda. Acknowledgement of the minutes from the Plan Commission of 6/6, the Library Board from 5/1, the Utility Advisory Board from 4/17, and the EMS Advisory Board from 5/1. Resolution, and then B would be Resolution Awarding Bid for Lake George Trail. This would award the bid to Albertson Excavating for $431,346.50. Seven would be Resolution Regarding Water Compliance Report. This resolution would approve the 2016 water compliance report and its submission to the DNR. And the last one is a resolution authorizing fire and EMS facility feasibility study. This resolution would approve the professional service agreement with five bugles designed for the River Falls Fire and EMS department's feasibility study in the amount of $28,000. Does anybody want to poll anything?
I'd like to poll six, just because I have a couple of questions.
Okay. Anything else? Otherwise, I entertain a motion on the rest.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval consent agenda items 5, 7, and 8.
I'll second.
Questions or comments?
All in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Bjork, you pulled number six.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure, so on that bid that we're looking at, we're not, we're not looking at doing that little spur that goes to the north down closer to the river, it's just the path that goes up to Division Street and not that, where there's a little spur, we're not doing anything that, is that lower spur to the east?
That is correct, and I apologize if my graphic there was confusing. It's not a, the one or the other.
Yeah.
The lower one was extended down on city property. We want to make sure we could tap into our 50/50 grant to the maximum extent practical, and as expected, our bids came in beyond where our 50/50 goes. By cutting that out, it brings us right back into that, that ballpark. I think that extension is looking to the future. That's a good thing that's happened in the Kenny Corridor project. They can look at it a little more closely, decide if it wants to be there further inland, wherever it wants to be.
All right, I'm cool with it, or professionally, I'm good with that then.
I make a motion, then, that we accept consent item number six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, move on to ordinance 2017-15, amending section 2.52 with municipal code EMS Advisory Board. This is the first meeting. Second, second reading disposition will be July 11th. Does the council have any questions on this? Nope. We'll move on to ordinance 2017-16, dogs and other domesticated animals ordinances. Again, this is the first reading. We have a second reading disposition on July 11th. Again, does the council have any questions? Okay, move on to reports. Development updates. Amy Peterson, there she is. Amy's going to give us a little update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Just one moment here.
And Amy is our Development Services Director. But not the IT person.
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing my, oh, there it is. We've got too many presentations up here. Okay, there we go. Just a few development updates so far in 2017. I'll cover, oh. I'm going to cover both commercial, industrial, residential, and then a few downtown highlights for you. Just on the commercial, industrial side to start out with, we've got some ongoing projects yet that we're still wrapping up, including Alina Health, Winfield, and TW Vending. In the next few slides, I'm going to focus on some of the new developments that you'll see on the right-hand side, and we'll go through each one of those individually. So if you look at the commercial, industrial numbers, I'm glad that looks better on your screen, it's kind of blurry over there. So if you look at the numbers through May 2017, you can see the number of permits on new construction and additions, and also the value that we have in millions for the year thus far, and the five-year annual average. And the one thing that I will point out to you is the 7.1 million five-year annual average. So you'll remember we had the year of wow last year, right? So when we almost hit 30 million. So that raised our five-year annual average significantly. Prior to that, our average was 1.2 million. So you may look at these numbers and go, "Oh, we're not tracking where we should be," but honestly, we, we're doing pretty good yet this year already, so. Those projects, then, that I had on the list, we had NCCM doing an addition of just over 14,000 square feet of primarily warehouse on the north side of their building. If you've been past there, you'll see that one is already under construction. As I roll through these, if you have questions, please just let me know. Best Made also doing a large addition to their, their property on the east side. Again, if you've been coming through on the highway, you'll see that going up as well, just over 20,000 square feet with a projected cost of 2.3 million. So if you remember back on those numbers, we're, we're tracking ahead on our additions in commercial, industrial this year, and, and less on the new developments so far through Obviously, the Business Incubator, Incubator, I know you've been keeping close tabs on that, has gotten started as well, just over 30,000 square feet and, and just over $3.9 We've also been working with the River Falls Gymnastics Group. They have the site next to the high school on the east side. They've come in for a site plan review for a facility just over 14,000 square feet and just over $1.2 million. I'm not quite sure if they're going to start construction yet this fall. I'm thinking it's probably going to be next year, but they are definitely on the ball, and, and we appreciate that, to be able to work through some of the, the questions that we have and, and issues that they might be having with the site as well. Eagle Storage up on the north side, the, the storage facility is moving forward. We've been through them, they've been through development review. They've got six buildings proposed on the site, almost 40,000 square feet. We've been working with them closely, they've been having some challenges regarding storm water and infrastructure. That parcel and the one just to the north used to be one parcel, and storm water was designed for the entire parcel, now they're two parcels. So we've been working closely with Eagle Storage and, and trying to keep them moving If we switch to residential, just a listing of our vacant lots so far by subdivision, you can see right now we've got about 120 vacant lots on our final-platted areas, and the two on the bottom, both Knollwood Phase 2 and Sterling Ponds, are the ones that have some movement right now in the preliminary plat. And actually, Knollwood, we have received the final plat, so you will probably be getting that, I believe it's at your July 25th meeting, for Knollwood to go ahead and move forward with their 38 lots that are left. So year-to-date permits on the single-family, you can see 18. Last year, our total was 45, so I think we're tracking pretty well on our single-family units. And our one-to-two family additions, we've got 13 permits so far. Last year, we had 85, but our, our total value last year was 800,000. So I think we've had some larger, larger additions coming on, not as many, but I think we're still tracking fine there as well. Just a couple downtown highlights to let you know about. I'm sure you've seen some of these if you've been down Main Street, but RE/MAX did move from Second Street to downtown, so they're located at 128 South Main. And Mimi's Cookies is under construction at 113 East Elm as well. Burrito Express is coming into 106 North Main, that's the current Moonshiners property, and I think they're going to have an anticipated opening in August, so that's going to be a new, new restaurant venue for our downtown here in the near future. The last thing to let you know about is that the bid and the DRC have been working on, on another mural project for the downtown, potentially to move forward. This is, obviously, it's the building just to the north of Subway, and there's a black-and-white rendering down at the bottom. You can see that building at one point was, I believe, Max Veterinary Clinic, and so this is a rendition of what it may have looked like at the time that Max Veterinary was there, so. Any questions that you might have? Good, thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Okay, next we'll have Communications Report from our Communication Manager, Mary Zimmerman.
Oh, that's not it. As Mayor Toland said, I'm Mary Zimmerman. I'm the Communications Manager. Thank you, Council and Mayor, for having me here today. It's one year and about one month since I started, this is my first time before you, so, so thanks again. I've really enjoyed working here just about every single day, so I appreciate Scott, and I appreciate my colleagues, and I appreciate you having me here and supporting me in the work that I do, so, thank you. Let's see. How do we move this along? Okay, all right, there we go. So, the Communications Program follows the strategic plan of the, of the city, and primarily three of the five goals. The first one being quality municipal services and promoting economic vitality and connecting community members. And I'm going to talk about, just about goal two today, because I was told I have five minutes, so I'm going to try to stick to that. Julie's going to give me a kick under the table if I go on. And one initiative under, under goal two, and that is maintaining high resident satisfaction. And I want to talk about three initiatives under that initiative. One is branding, one is social media, and basically Facebook, and then the third is our video program. So I want to just take a, just a quick second, I found these quotes a little bit earlier today, and one is branding should both precede and underlie any marketing effort. So branding is not a marketing effort in itself, it runs under everything that we do and everything that we are. I really like this one, it's not a push, but it's a pull, so we're bringing people into our world through our branding, and that it's all about our truth and our value in the city and in the state and the world. So branding is one thing I look at a lot every day. We're all brand keepers, but I might be the, one of the top brand enforcers, so I take that, that job very seriously. So one thing we did this year was to look at our, our logo and to say, do we need to really go through an entire branding process and make a lot of fixes, or are we happy with, with what we have, and is, are there some tweaks we can make to bring it into the 21st century? So we did that with the help of a designer, and we didn't do a lot, but I think it makes a big difference. It's cleaner, the oval is kind of smooshed here, but it's bigger, there's space in the oval for movement, and we've changed the city of from that old script to a more contemporary font. So we're starting to use that everywhere. The other thing we wanted to do was to look at the newsletter and see if there were changes that we could make there to enhance the brand, and we did send out a reader's survey online in September and got 314 responses, so we're happy with that. And they said they really liked the information that was in there, could we organize it differently? Could we add some more white space, and could we make the font bigger? So we did some of those, those things while keeping elements that people really like to have, like the mayor's message. So there it is. Oh, boy, this might be harder to see, sorry about that. Some things that I thought you might find interesting is the age of our readers are mostly between 35 and 49, but also 50 and 64. So we see that throughout our media platforms. And then the, the thing that I really liked, and kudos to Christie, was that most people who get the newsletter read all of it or most of it. This is another thing that I like, is when we asked people, "Where do you get most of your city news from?", most people said the newsletter before the River Falls Journal. Glad Greta isn't here. So that was good to know. And then one thing we'll just touch on later is that the cable news stations, or the cable station is not getting the same amount of attention as the others. So we asked the, the readers what they wanted to hear most about. It's always parks and trails in this city, so that's great, and people really like that city and community calendar, it makes them feel part of the community. They like to hear more about features, read about features that have to do with residents and organizations and issues. They like to know what's happening downtown with economic development. They like our green initiatives, and they like to hear about the university. We are also engaged in a website redesign, and Christie is leading that effort, and stay tuned, February 2018, we'll have a fabulous new website, and that will follow again along the lines of our, of our branding we've established. One thing that we've taken a, a big look at this year is our Facebook presence, and it's been a wonderful tool for us in many different ways. It's probably, it is our more, most robust social media tool. YouTube would follow that.
that. Um, so we're starting there, and we'll break, break out a little bit more as soon as I get Scott Simpson to tweet. We joined Facebook in 2014, currently, we have 2,700 likes, a little more. Um, we've increased over the past year by 78 percent. We have six, uh, city on pages and total likes of over 10,000. Interesting to note that more, a lot more women than men read our, our Friends of Us, and again, there's that age group, the 25 to 44. We have, uh, you can see the total there, in the USA, it's, uh, a little over 2,600. River Falls is less than half of that, so there are many other cities, I have three listed here, mostly in Wisconsin and Minnesota. International, we have 6,629 from Brazil, we must have had some students sometime from Brazil, we've got, uh, one from Uganda and Morocco and Georgia, so it's kind of interesting to see. Um, so here are six, um, Facebook pages, and we're sometimes asked, why so many, and can't we consolidate? And we say no, because, um, there, while some folks overlap, some are, um, interested in what's happening at police stations, some are interested in what's happening with utilities, um, and we have a lot to say. We also work really closely together to cross-post, so that we're all kind of in the loop at the same time. We, um, like I say here, we share each other's posts, this was one, uh, the summer, Hanging of the Lights, shared by utilities, and then also the Chamber. And we also share what's going on in the communities, so the Thon, and the one on the right bottom, was a video of all the good things to eat at the farmer's market. We love to boost, a lot. Um, if you don't know what that is, it's, it's very, very inexpensive advertising, so for usually 30 or 50 dollars, we can boost a post and send it out to anybody we want to. We can identify the audience, their interests, their likes, their ages, their gender. Um, we do that a lot on the left for recruitment, and it's, it's done very well for us. And then also, uh, most recently, National Night Out, we had two, well, we had one folks sign up, and 10 different groups came, and now we have 15 groups, um, hosting a National Night Out, and last year there were two. So Facebook had a lot to do with that, I think. Um, our video program, we've been meeting a lot, um, in the video, folks, we have a committee of our staff, and, um, trying to sort of reimagine who we are and what we do. Um, Kevin's on that committee, and so is Dennis. Um, our vision, and this is still sort of in draft form, but I really like it, our vision is, um, that our video program will be the number-one source for city news, and our mission is to connect, inform, and engage. Some priorities here, you can read them, um, we really need to figure out how we're going to respond to folks when they say we want a video, which happens about once every other day. Um, so we're putting together some policies, create a plan, we're going to look at equipment, inexpensive, inexpensive equipment that we can use, um, to fulfill the plan. We want to really, uh, brand our city at work in Kenny City Minute, um, shorts. Uh, we want to implement a digital asset management system, that means that our videos and our photos are in one place and well-organized, which they are today. And then we want to start talking about cable alternatives. On our YouTube channel, we have 246 videos, you can read that, um, there's our YouTube channel, if you're not there or haven't been there, visit us, there's a lot to see. Uh, right now, we're sort of grouped into meetings, this meeting today, and two other, um, aboard in the commission, those shorts that I just mentioned, special projects like the Kenny Corridor, around town is an amalgam of work that we do for the community, and then other special projects. Probably can't read this, but the top 10 from this year, um, so far, we've got three of the four tech talks there, um, so two must have been pretty juicy River City, or, sorry, River Falls Council meetings, um, for some reason quilt show from 2015, um, and you can see the others. So 1,700, pretty good, pretty good viewership. Uh, our early adopter of Facebook Live is Kevin, has, um, three or four times, um, done a, a live show on Facebook, very well-received, and, um, we're using them for breaking news, um, really important events, you know, what's that guy doing flushing the hydrants, and what's that all about? And the one, the one on the right was a, a pretty serious outage, um, this winter. That's, wow, thank you. How'd I do? Five minutes? So those are, those are three, just three of the programs that we're undertaking, there's a lot more, so hopefully I can come back at another time. Thank you very much. Questions?
I have one quick question. So on, um, you said your readers, or our readers for the newsletter, what age group again?
Um, I think that was...
Into 49?
Twenty, yeah.
And let me ask, so whatever that number was, how do you know that? Is that from the survey?
Yeah.
So...
We asked them their age.
Okay, so we have to be cautious with that, because not all people turn in a survey. I would think, I don't, my mind is thinking it's probably the older people that are reading it more than the younger people or the mid-range that you have, but the mid-range people took it, so.
That's a really good point.
I think our senior people probably read it religiously.
Good, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Any other questions for Mary? Thanks, Mary.
Yeah.
Okay, next we have a strategic plan update, and our, our management analyst, Carrie's going to give us that. And Carrie, has a piece of good news she'd like to tell us all about.
Oh, no.
Come on.
Yeah, I, so I got engaged.
There you go.
A few weeks ago, yes, thank you, thank you. Now you got malfustered, Mayor.
Yep.
Thank you for that. And now I'll report, um, give the second, uh, quarter, 2017 update on the strategic plan. So, um, just to, I start out every, um, every time I give this presentation, just with a little background, so in December of 2014, the, um, city council adopted the city's first strategic plan, and this plan has really been used as a guide, um, for work plans for the city staff, and a guide, um, on where the city invests its time and resources. And included in this plan, there are five, um, goals that the city focuses on. And the first goal is ensuring, um, financial sustainability, um, and throughout, you'll see everything, all the statuses are color-coded, and that's just so staff can keep track of what goal we're meeting and what goal we're still, still working towards. But as you can see here, all four of the targets are in the green and are being met. The second, um, goal is consistently delivering quality municipal services, and again, all three of these targets are being met. Since 2013, the city has been partnering with the National Research Center to conduct a comprehensive survey, and the 2017 citizen survey is now in, in the process. Um, on May 30th, uh, surveys were mailed to 1,500 residents, um, and if you did not receive, uh, a mailed survey, the online survey is now available, so check the city's Facebook page and the website, and that link is there. The online survey will be available until July 10th, so two weeks. Um, and the city council will, will receive a presentation, um, of the results of the survey in the fall. Promoting economic vitality is the third goal of the plan, and at the end of the second quarter, the value, total value for commercial and industrial permits totaled approximately 7.6 million dollars, and the total value for residential permits totaled approximately 3.9 or million dollars, or 66 percent of the target. And, um, some good news for Sterling Ponds, um, at the end of the second quarter, the assessed values, um, in the Sterling Ponds Corporate Park was approximately 5.2 million dollars, which exceeds the 2 million target, uh, 2 million dollar target that we have on that. And I know Amy talked about this a little bit in her presentation, but these are just some pictures. Construction has started on the St. Croix Valley Business Innovation Center, and it is going very quickly, so, um, the building is scheduled to be completed this fall. Connecting community members is the fourth strategic goal, and it's focused on gathering spaces and places. Um, the first Glen Park, um, open house was held on June 14th, and approximately 100 people came to that open house, and the next one is scheduled for August 16th. Um, that, there have been four tech talks held so far for the Kenny Corridor project, and the next one, um, will be held on July 20th, um, and the topic will be Dan removal The last strategic plan goal is considering future generations, and, um, green power, um, sales has increased to 9.2 percent, and we continue to be number one in the state for customer participation and purchasing renewable energy. So, the next update will be in October, and does the council have any questions? No?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, next we'll move on to the minister's report. If anybody's got anything for Scott, or if Scott's got anything for us.
I just wish everybody, uh, safe and happy Fourth Holiday.
Yeah. We will move on to the comp trailers report then, for me.
Great, the, excuse me, the comp trailers report for May 2017, general fund revenues through the end of May were 3,614,457 dollars versus 3,933,068 dollars at this time in 2016. The major factor for this difference is property tax revenues, which are 50 percent of budgeted. The reason for this is that a greater proportion of property taxes received in 2017 have been allocated to funds other than the general fund. Included in revenue is 7,429 dollars in liquor license revenues, and 62,365 dollars in building permit fees. General fund expenditures for the same period were 3,9592,490 dollars, as compared with 3,353,000 dollars at this time last year. Spending is still consistent with prior years at 35 percent of budgeted amounts. Net of revenue over expenditures as of May 31st is a surplus of 21,967 dollars.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple announcements, I have a couple appointments I'd like the council to look on, favorably upon, um, I'd like to reappoint Rebecca Ferguson to, to reappoint to the library board through July of 2020, and the Exeterial Zoning Committee, I'd like to appoint Lisa Moody, Bill Stossel, and Susan Reese will be appointed, and Mary Van Gaal will be appointed at first alternative, and Scott Morissette will be appointed as second alternative.
I...
These will be for as long as they are on the, uh, planning commission.
I move approval of your appointments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do I need to abstain from that, since I'm...
Oh.
I don't know.
You okay with that?
I'm fine. You never told me about it, but I'm fine with it.
I haven't called anybody and told them yet, I just, I thought I'd let them hear it here first. Okay. Next, we'll move in, recess in a closed session, per Wiscon, Wisconsin State Statute 19.851 G for the following purposes, conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved to wit St. Croix Valley Habitat for Humanity.
Mr. Mayor?
We, uh, I'm, I'm, make a motion, we move into closed session.
Second.
Second.
We have a roll call?
I expect this to be, uh, 10 to 20 minutes, and we will not likely have action.
Uh, Christie, can I have a roll call, please?
Watson?
Yes.
Bjork?
Yes.
Biersted?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Close session.